Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, you all. Hello there.
Morning, Senator.
We're not live yet. We will be going quick. Once we go live, I will take your testimony and I'll try to take a couple other individuals, elected officials. And we will be trying to move forward because I've got another bill that has Secretary of State from Maine. And so we're going to need to accommodate two other people's schedules. So, thank you. I'm very happy that you're able to join with us. And Ame, I am assuming this first, the motion, actually the memorial and the resolutions are your two?
That is correct, Chair.
All right. We're going to be opening up both of them. And I was looking for my agenda and I didn't see it.
It was sent at 7:17.
7:17, okay, thank you.
And we're still missing quite a few members. Let's see.
Yeah, I'm not ready.
Okay.
When's the floor put on Merrick Garland?
Jeff Merkley? What am I? Where am I?
Greetings.
How you doing, Jeff?
I'm just wondering how we're doing on members?
They are popping in pretty quickly. It looks like we may be one short at the moment.
Okay. So Jeff, just for, if we didn't communicate, I wasn't sure if you heard what I was saying. I'll take your testimony first after we have an introduction on the measures. And I think at this point, we're going to go ahead and open up both of the memorial and the resolution. So we'll have Ame give us the overview of each of those and then I'll go directly to you. And then I'm assuming your day is fixed, that you'll be leaving us shortly thereafter. You're muted, Jeff.
I will leave immediately because I'm up for questioning in the Environment Committee. So I'll be jumping off after I speak. Thank you for inviting me.
Again, thank you very much for you and your staff making the accommodations to get some stuff on the record. All right, I'm ready to go ahead. Let's go ahead. Who's doing the roll call today?
Good morning, Chair. This is Amrit. I'll be doing roll today. And we are live now.
All right, that's great. I just wanted to see, all right, I'm going to go ahead and open up the Committee for the Senate Judiciary and Ballot Measure 10 Implementation Committee. Today is Wednesday, February 24th. We are meeting remotely. What we're going to do is start off with a roll call and then I'll have a couple of quick announcements before we start our public hearings for today. Ame, if you would be, Amrit, if you would be so kind to call the roll.
Absolutely, Chair. Senator Dembrough?
Senator Dembrough is here by video.
Senator Gelsner?
Senator Gelsner is here by video.
Senator Hurd?
Hurd here by video.
Senator Lintecum?
He's having trouble logging on, but I know he's trying to log on.
Okay. Why don't we go to the next and we'll come back for Senator Lintecum.
Present by video.
Thank you.
Present by video.
Thank you.
Senator Manning?
Senator Manning, present by video.
Vice Chair Thatcher?
Thatcher, present by video.
Chair Przyansky?
Przyansky is also here by video. So colleagues, thank you very much for being here. We do have a number of bills today that will be taking public testimony on. We do have, and because of the bills that we have, we have some special invited guests to give testimony because of their stat, their position as elected officials. We will be taking some of those individuals out of order. So we'll have to open and close or recess these hearings that we're in to make certain we can accommodate their time because there will be calling in, at least one of them is calling in from the East Coast. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up our joint, our public hearings on the Senate Joint Memorial Number Two, as well as the Senate Joint Resolution Number Ten. We are very fortunate and gratitude to our first person that will be speaking. Senator Jeff Merkley is here and he has extremely tight schedule. So Senator Merkley, for the committee, I want to thank you for participating. I know that you need to jump off immediately after you give your testimony. But if you'd be so kind to give us your words, we have opened the record on both the memorial and the resolution. And so if you can give us your name for the testimony and if you're speaking on one only, please identify which one. If you're going to speak on both, please state so. Thank you, Senator Merkley.
Thank you very much, Chair Przyansky. U.S. Senator Jeff Merkley, Senator for Oregon. And I'll be speaking to the principal behind both the memorial, which addresses the U.S. Constitution and the potential change to the Thirteenth Amendment, and to S.J. Resolution Ten, which addresses the Oregon Constitution. And special greetings to Vice Chair Thatcher and Leader Wagner and Senators Frederick and Manning Gelsner and so many others who have recognized the need to confront our history of racial injustice or systemic racism, both in Oregon and across the nation. The specific topic at the federal level, the Thirteenth Amendment, we are taught in grade school or high school that this ended slavery in the United States of America. But it had a clause in it, the slavery clause, which that actually slavery can go forward if you have been convicted of a crime. So it reads very directly, "Neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States." That exception was immediately seized on by southern states of the United States following the Civil War. And what they developed were laws referred to collectively as Black Codes. And the Black Codes were a series of provisions that essentially allowed you to arrest any black person at any time for any reason. There were things such as speaking too loudly, not yielding a sidewalk, being unemployed, loitering, so on and so forth. So this enabled southern state governments to be able to arrest an individual, convict them of one of these Black Codes, and then put them into slavery, rent them out. This became a major source of funding to state governments. And it continued all of the horrors of slavery because you were ripping parents away from their children or away from their spouses. You were destroying the finances of the family. You were providing just a continuous source of intimidation and oppression. That's not a history that we really, that we really learn about, but it continued decade after decade after decade. And it set the stage of what became the Jim Crow system. It set the stage for mass incarceration. And it also was part of the effort to take away the vote because many states said, well, if you're convicted, you lose the ability to vote. And therefore, we can cut black power in the United States of America by both imprisoning people and renting them out as slaves and preventing them from voting. So this is a horrific history and it continues even to the day in the form of some states using private prisons that do continue to rent prisoners out and their labor for funds, funds for the state. So I am very, very pleased to see that Oregon Legislature, the Oregon Senate, is working to address this because Oregon has a virtually identical clause in its constitution and states in Article One, Section Thirty-four, "There shall be neither slavery nor involuntary servitude in the state otherwise than as punishment for crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted." Virtually identical. Now several states have already moved on this effort. Colorado has taken this clause out of their constitution. Utah has taken it out. Nebraska has taken it out. And so this is absolutely a time for additional states across the country that adopted this clause to say, "We too will join this effort to right this historic wrong, to take away this significant symbol and factor of systemic racism." So thank you to the committee for both addressing your potential support for federal action on the Thirteenth Amendment and also for addressing action, the potential for action, on the Oregon Constitution. It is the right thing to do. And thank you for the opportunity to join you all for this hearing today.
Senator Merkley, again, I want to thank you for your time and efforts and your work in the same issues facing all of our country. We'd love to have you stay with us, but we know that your day is extremely busy. So again, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Chair. Take care.
So at this point, colleagues, I do want to make another announcement that what we're going to be doing is because the number of individuals that have signed up for the various bills that we have today, we will be using a timer for three minutes. I believe that was noted to most of the individuals. So what we'll do at this point, I'm going to continue to take testimony from elected officials on these two matters, on the memorial and the resolution. And you'll have three minutes to make your point on either or both. And then at some point close to 8:30, we will be needing to check in to make certain that we accommodate the guest for the another bill that will be heard later today. So with that, I'm going to start with Senator Manning. I would like for you to go ahead and make any opening statements that you'd like to make our testimony on these two bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair, committee members. For the record, my name is James Ivory Manning, Jr. I'm the senator from Senate District Seven, which is north and west Eugene, up to and including Junction City, Monroe, Lancaster. Today, I really appreciate the opportunity to follow U.S. Senator Jeff Merkley in support of these two measures, which are S.J.M. Two and S.J.R. Ten. Senator Merkley pretty much laid everything out as to the intent of the Thirteenth Amendment and what it has done and the pathway it has laid for people of color, particularly African American. He had mentioned one fact that really hit home is that because of the color of your skin, in some of these states, you can still be walking down the street and get accused of something and either wind up doing life imprisonment or either being dead because of the color of your skin. This is something that I live with every day. I worry about it. I'm concerned about it. My children, I am, to be honest with you, I am concerned each and every time they go outside of the house because they are, just by the color of their skin, they are targets, targets of society, targets of a society that's built on racism, slavery, and oppression. Allies, this is, these two bills, these two measures here are really important and we will find out where the hearts are actually are for Oregonians when we start voting on this measure. We will find out who is who and where your humanity really lies. I'm hoping that we all agree upon slavery, no matter what form, is wrong and there are things that we can do right now to try to correct all of the injustice. It won't erase it. It will not erase it. But children yet to be born can benefit from actions that we take today. I conclude my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. I believe Senator Frederick is also joining us. And if you are, Senator Frederick, if you'd please give us your name and your testimony. Again, we are working under a timer system today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Lou Frederick. I'm a state senator from District Twenty-two. And you're going to hear the same sort of theme. I just want to quote W.B. DuBois, who actually, his birthday is today. He wrote this in 1903. "The nation has not yet found peace from its sins." Believe me, that's the kind of thing that I deal, that I'm dealing with as well every day. Thank you, Senator Manning. I didn't get a chance to get it here for Senator Merkley's presentation because I was in another committee meeting. Needed to have a quorum for that. But it is a basic situation. It is a legacy that has been, that stays with us in a number of ways and not just in terms of incarceration. It stays, once the incarceration takes place, you're also dealing with the fact that after that, you're not able to get jobs. You're not able to get housing, education, business loans, et cetera. This is an insidious situation that has taken place because of a legacy of slavery that we're dealing with. I have submitted two pictures. I'm not sure whether you can see those or not. I just submitted them a few minutes ago. One is a picture of my great-grandfather. He's in the middle with my grandmother on one side, my father and my mother on the other side. My sister is in my father's arms and that's me down at the bottom. My great-grandfather was an enslaved person. He was enslaved in Mississippi. He was freed during Civil War. I got a chance to know him. He's 103 in that picture. The next picture is a picture of me in a demonstration and I was about 12 years old. My first tear gas was when I was eight years old. So I've been dealing with the approach to try to change these things for some time. And I think this is one step for the state, one step for the nation, and I hope you will be voting for it, for both of them. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Senator Wagner, I know that you've joined us as well.
Good morning, Chair Przyansky. Vice Chair Thatcher, members of the committee, for your record, I'm Rob Wagner. I'm the state senator from Senate District Nineteen. I want to thank you for having me and my colleagues here today to discuss these critical issues, amending the U.S. Constitution and Oregon's Constitution to remove harmful vestiges of racism and inhumanity. Like many of you, I'm an avid student of Oregon history, including the history of our state constitution. And as lawmakers, we have to be true and honest reading our foundational documents so that we can learn from, improve on, and make our state better for everyone. We are working to actively address policies, statutes, budgets, and even language in our own constitution that addresses these historic failings. Only through an actively anti-racist frame can we confront the persistent truths of racial inequity and we can aspire to be that more perfect union. As many of you know, Oregon was the only state admitted to the Union with an exclusion law in our constitution, which wasn't removed for 67 years, in 1926, with still 37% of Oregonians voting no. I want to read just a couple lines from a book on Oregon history from former state representative Tom Marsh about the mindset of Oregonians 100 years ago. Quote, "Casper Kubli was one of the most influential Oregon politicians. Ashrewd opportunist, he was very successful in exploiting the fears and bigotry. When a resurrected Ku Klux Klan made a grab for power in 1922, Casper K. Kubli, initials KKK, was issued Klan membership card number one. In 1923, Kubli was elected Speaker of the Oregon House. We can say that was long ago, that mindsets have changed. However, it wasn't until a ballot measure in 2002 that much of the racist language was officially removed from Oregon's Constitution. Yet when asked the question about removing that odious stain from our past, 352,000 fellow Oregonians voted no. We have a moral responsibility to ensure that our most important governing documents reflect our true values. Slavery and involuntary servitude in any form cannot be allowed to continue. Passing these bills would be a momentous step in continuing our efforts to undo the harms of racism and inhumane practices. Today, we'll hear from many voices about the impacts of slavery and involuntary servitude exception. And I'm grateful for the teachers, the community members, and the young people who are here to testify and share their experiences on abolition work. I want to thank you for holding a public hearing on these bills and I urge the committee support for Senate Joint Memorial Two and Senate Concurrent Resolution Ten."
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to ask, Ame, do we have any other legislators that have signed up? I have looked at the list that I have. I believe I've exhausted the ones that I knew were going to be here as of yesterday. And if we had any others that need to be taken, we will do that at this point.
Give me one moment, Chair. I am checking for you.
Senator Solomon waiting.
Senator Thatcher, I didn't hear what you just said.
I see Representative Solomon on the screen, my screen.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad you do. I don't. Representative Solomon, it appears that you're with us today and you probably want to give testimony. I'm going to ask you to go ahead and identify yourself for the record. And again, we have three minutes for you to make your comments on either or both of the measures that are before us.
Thank you so much. I am here to speak regarding Senate Joint Resolution Ten. Good morning, Chair Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee, for the record. I am Janine Solomon, the state representative for House District Thirty, which includes areas of Banks, North Plains, Hillsborough, and Aloha-Beverton. I wanted just to speak very briefly today and offer my support for this resolution. The past fall, I was approached by Jordan Schott, a student at Willamette University, upon recommendation of her advisor, who I had met at a criminal justice reform event at Willamette. I was a yes on the concept right away. And I'm happy to be working with Senator James Manning, my former co-chair of the Public Safety Ways and Means, and other colleagues to work to make this change in our Oregon Constitution. I am so proud of my Senator, Senator Merkley, who is leading this effort in the federal government. I rise to such support not only because it's the absolute right thing to do and to change, but the stories I have heard of adults in custody that are sometimes asked to do laborious work for little repayment or no payment at all disturbs me to my core. In the wildfires we experienced last September, it has been widely reported across the country, in fact, that Oregon inmates who worked on these fire lines side by side with firefighters often earned less than $10 a day. As co-chair of the Joint Ways and Means Subcommittee on Public Safety, I have heard testimony of adults in custody that are sent to shovel snow and stack wood for community members for no compensation. This is not okay and it needs to end. There is no excuse for allowing anyone, no matter their situation, to be allowed to perform involuntary servitude. I urge you to join me and my colleagues in sponsorship of this bill for positive change in Oregon. I urge your support of this bill. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. I understand that the Secretary of State of Oregon, Shemia Fagan, is with us. If so, Secretary of State, are you with us?
I do see her as in the meeting, Chair. I'm not sure, maybe if she's muted on accident.
All right. So Secretary of State Fagan, if you are with us.
This is Senator Gelsner. She just texted that she's having trouble getting unmuted?
All right. So if you're in the teams, you should be able to unmute yourself. What we've heard from others is if you log out and log back in, you'll be able to kick in. If you're by phone, you would need to unmute yourself, which is star six.
And she says she's getting a command that says, it says only meeting organizers and presenters can share.
All right. I think at this point, I'm going to ask staff to try to work with her to see what accommodations we need to make. And I am going to ask regarding the other bill that we'll be hearing testimony on, Senate Bill 571, we are waiting for the Secretary of State of Maine to join us as well. And that's Secretary of State Bellows, from what I have in my notes. And I'm wondering if she is available because I understand she had a tight timeline as well.
I am here if it is appropriate.
All right. So if you will hang on one second, Secretary of State Bellows, what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to recess the two measures that we have in front of us right now. So we will go into recess on S.J.M. Two, as well as S.J.R. Ten. And I'm going to open up for the purpose of taking invited testimony on Senate Bill 571. And what I need to do first is I figure, let's see, I forget who is our point on 571, but I'd like to have a summary of the Senate Bill 571 put on the record before we take testimony.
Sure, Chair. This is Joanne's bill that she is also in the other Judiciary Committee at the same moment, so I'll read it for her. Senate Bill 571 allows persons convicted of felony to register to vote, update voter registration, and vote in elections while incarcerated. Specifies that person's residence is where person resided prior to incarceration. Directs the Secretary of State to establish by rule procedures to allow for persons convicted of felony to register to vote, update voter registration, and vote in elections while incarcerated.
All right, thank you. Secretary Bellows, I really appreciate you taking time out of your day to give us testimony. I hope word got to you because of the intense amount of testimony we have. Unfortunately, we have to limit you to three minutes, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and distinguished members of the committee. I deeply appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today in support of Senate Bill 571, which strengthens an individual's constitutional right to vote. My name is Shana Bellows. I am Maine's 50th Secretary of State and the Chief Elections Officer and Chief Motor Vehicles Official for the great state of Maine. In Maine, we believe democracy is stronger when it represents everyone and when everyone can participate. SB 571 is critical because it re-enfranchises the voices of individuals who may otherwise feel disconnected from their community and state and puts an end to a policy rooted in racism dating back to the Jim Crow era. Additionally, this bill largely follows what has proven to work here in Maine and also in our neighboring state of Vermont. Article Two of the Maine State Constitution makes it explicit that all United States citizens age 18 or older who are residents of the state of Maine have a right to vote. Maine citizens never lose their right to vote, even upon conviction or incarceration. People in prison or jail in Maine may register to vote from their place of residence prior to incarceration and may cast an absentee ballot. This is facilitated by voter registration drives at the Maine State Prison and in the county jails, as well as procedures to facilitate absentee voting by incarcerated persons. The constitutional guarantee to the right to vote eliminates confusion. When the same set of rules apply to all people, regardless of background or circumstance, then there is less opportunity for discrimination or prejudicial treatment. Similarly, universal franchise strengthens civic participation. A person who is incarcerated maintains closer ties to the community to which they will return after incarceration if they're able to continue to have a vote and voice and who represents them. The power in our democracy rightly resides with the people, no matter where they cast their ballot from. I strongly urge this committee to support this bill and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We do have someone that's on the line right now that's participating in the meeting that is not muted.
Press star now.
Well, I guess that's a special command. That individual, I don't know if we're going to get them to be able to mute. Is there, Secretary Bellows, I don't believe we're going to have any questions at this time. I want to thank you very, very, very much for your time again and putting your statement and testimony on the record. I hope your day continues to be well and hopefully that, not checking the weather, but hopefully y'all are not in any deep freeze.
Thanks so much. Take good care.
Thank you. Be well. All right, at this point, I'm wondering if we've been successful in getting Secretary Fagan on the line.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
I can. Almost a little double back, but let's go ahead and have you give your testimony. Hopefully, technical difficulties will resolve themselves.
Thank you, Chair Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, members of the committee. For the record, I'm Shemia Fagan and I'm honored to serve as Oregon's 28th Secretary of State.
Secretary Fagan, one thing I do need to do, I apologize. I need to go ahead and just recess Senate Bill 571. And I'm going to come back in out of recess for S.J.M. Two, as well as S.J.R. Ten. I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am here to testify on Senate Bill 571. So is that the one that you just recessed?
Yes. I'm sorry, I did not realize that I had you down for the other two. So we'll go ahead and put back into recess S.J.M. Two, S.J.R. Ten, and we'll come out of recess on SB 571. And again, I apologize for the interruption.
No worries, Mr. Chair. I, again, for the record, I'm Shemia Fagan. I'm honored to serve as Oregon's 28th Secretary of State. And I was unaware of those other two resolutions, but I can say that certainly I would be in support, our office is in support of those as well. But I'm here today in support of Senate Bill 571. I, to begin quickly, I remember a day that you, Mr. Chair, when I was a member of this committee, took us to Coffee Creek. And we had an opportunity to tour the women's prison and it was a pretty And it was a pretty remarkable experience. There were dog training folks doing that, and there were other folks doing vocational training. And it was an impactful day, but what struck me more than anything was when we were leaving, I think I rode with you, Mr. Chair. We left through a brightly colored room with toys and dolls and stuffed animals. And it was the place that these women had the opportunity to visit with their children when they were having visitation. And as a mom myself, that really struck me. I remember talking with you about it on the way back. And it really struck me that, you know, I don't know what these women were incarcerated for or for how long, but the fact that even when they were there and they were incarcerated, they never stopped being mothers. And that really struck me. And I'm here today as Oregon's Chief Elections Officer in support of Senate Bill 571 because this bill stands for the simple proposition that when somebody's incarcerated, they don't stop being citizens. And my agency's job is to uphold Oregon's democracy. And so I support the expansion of access to voting for adults in custody. And evidence suggests, which I'm sure you'll hear much of today, that when those who are incarcerated retain their right to vote, they remain more connected to society and recidivism rates are reduced, which makes Oregonians safer and our communities safer. And the simple act of voting and adding a voice to a decision about our democracy shows that every person in our community and state and country have a voice. And to be clear, this is a civil rights issue. The facts are undisputed that Black, Brown, Indigenous, and other people of color are overrepresented in our criminal justice system, and this isn't by chance. These are Jim Crow era laws with a specific intent to target, disenfranchise, and silence the voice of people of color from voting. And nearly 10% of those who are incarcerated are veterans. 75% of the women incarcerated are mothers, as I noted in my opening that story. And it's about 15,000, you know, less than 15,000 people statewide. And nationally, the ACLU reports that as of 2016, 1 in 56 non-Black voters lost their right to vote. Conversely, 1 in 13 Black voters in the U.S. has lost their right to vote, and those numbers speak for themselves. Like many contentious issues, when you look to other states, there are significant variances. My colleague, Shenna Ballow, Secretary Ballow's from Ver- of Ver- Maine is here today. So Maine, of course, allows folks who are incarcerated to vote. Vermont and the District of Columbia, they never disenfranchise voters. And Oregon is among 18 states that allows people to vote upon release. In 19 other states, people are allowed to vote upon release and paying of fines or fees or restitution. And 11 states completely remove the vote for, on certain crimes and require a governor's pardon or implementing an additional waiting period to vote. So ultimately, the work of deciding criminal sentencing laws lies with you, the legislature. But as Oregon's Chief Elections Officer, I'm doing my best to lead this agency with pro-democracy principles. And Oregon has already taken a significant step in this direction years ago by allowing Oregonians with felony criminal convictions to vote upon completion of their sentence. And Senate Bill 571 would take the final step of enfranchising, re-enfranchising Oregonians and allowing them to vote while serving their sentence, and I urge your support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. I know that your day is full, so I appreciate you taking the time to give us your testimony. Regarding the other individuals, elected officials, I had on my list. I understand Representative Salinas may be here, wanting to give testimony on 571. I do not see or hear anything from her. Senator Gelsner, I also understand that you may want to also give some testimony today on this particular bill. If that's so, then I'm going to go ahead and take that. And then we have one other individual who is a date time certain for 571 that I'd like to go ahead and see if they are available to take their testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, for the record, my name is Sarah Gelsner. I represent Senate District 8, and I'm a member of your committee. I'm very proud to join with a number of my colleagues in bringing forward Senate Bill 571 for the reasons that have been stated by the speakers before me. I think this is just a basic matter of fairness and democracy. I know we have many people who are here to speak to the technicalities and the specifics. And since I have the privilege of serving on the committee, I would like to reserve the time for them rather than taking up the minutes here. But I do urge our iVote, and I thank you for scheduling the hearing, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. And I do understand that Representative Salinas is with us. She just wasn't quite quick to the draw to unmute. So Representative Salinas, if you hopefully have got the unmute, you have three minutes to give us your testimony. Thank you. If you're calling in, it'll be a star six if you're not on the video.
Mr. Chair, she is on video, and I could see she's attempting to talk, and you can see she's having trouble.
Yeah. I don't have the widescreen or whatever, because for whatever reason, I'm not seeing a lot of the individuals that other colleagues are, so.
Put it together, Mo.
Chair Thatcher, thank you for the play-by-play. All right. I think what we're going to do is going to move forward. And Representative Salinas, hopefully you will be able to unmute yourself or we'll be able to help you. As we've heard from others, you may need to basically come out and come back into the meeting and kind of reboot into the meeting, because sometimes that will help clear that up. I do have an individual that had a, that was a special request from the presenters for Arnando Ruiz. I'm wondering if Mr. Ruiz is with us at this point.
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you had not been hearing what I need you to please do is give us your name for your, before your testimony, and you'll have up to three minutes to provide us with your testimony. And thank you very much for being here, and please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Arnando Ruiz, and I work at Latino Network as a program manager for three mentorship programs. My county of residence is Monoma County, and I was formerly incarcerated for 19 years with the Oregon Department of Corrections. For me, what this bill draws out of me is I was remembering in 2016 when we did a mock election at the Oregon State Penitentiary and stuff. And one of the things that I noticed is just the interest that the people at OSP had when it came to this and stuff. But then I also noticed that there were some folks who were just like, hmm. And so for me, I wanted to kind of figure out like, what was that? Like, what's going on and stuff? And so one of the things, when I went around asking folks like why they were not necessarily interested, they were like, it's not, my vote doesn't do anything. I don't feel like I'm contributing to anything. And so for me, this is, it felt really great to get out and be able to just automatically vote. And so there was something about that just felt like I was being accepted back into my community and stuff. And so that's one of the things, and so for folks to be able to vote in there, I think that this makes them feel like they're included in their community. It further incentivized them, you know, to participate. And so I'm in favor of this bill, and I really appreciate the time that you gave me to speak on it. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Chair, you're muted.
Yeah. I just want to thank you for your time and getting your comments on the record. I know that you had a time conflict, and that's why we wanted to try to accommodate your needs. So thank you very much for your testimony. I also know that DA Schmidt is on the call and has another tight schedule, so 571. So Mike, if you're here with us, I'd like to go ahead and take your testimony at this time. And again, if you are calling in, you will need to do star six to unmute. If not, then you should be able to unmute yourself if you're with us on Teams.
And I do see him, Chair. He's just muted.
So I'm wondering, we'll go back and forth between the two mutes. Representative Salinas has been able to join us. Unmute it. All right. I'm not sure what the issues are, Senator Gelsner.
Yes, I just have a, I was going to email on me, but this might be faster. I'm wondering if it's possible from the control booth to just unmute everyone? I think that you can't override that when you're on the computer because there isn't a star six function. So if the administrator has muted everyone, I think unless you are a member of the team itself, you can't unmute yourself.
So unfortunately, I cannot unmute anyone, and I didn't put a lock on anybody. So anybody who's muted should be able to unmute themselves. That's an extra step to make it so that people can't unmute, and I don't have that lock on. So I'm not sure what's going on. Thank you.
Yeah. I think at this point, what I'd like to do is I'm wondering if we have IS available, and maybe we can do a little work behind the scenes as to whether we need to somehow regroup the meeting. We are having a number of people who are giving testimony. What I think at this point is I'm going to ask again to see if DA Schmidt or Representative Salinas have been able to unmute themselves. So we're going to do this. For those two individuals, and really for anyone else, we do have the record open until tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. for taking written testimony. And if your schedules are such that you cannot continue to stay with us, that would be a means for how you can get testimony before. We are checking with IS now, so we may have some feedback in the next few minutes. I think at this point, because of the number of people that we have, I'm going to stay with Senate Bill 571, knowing that the individuals that were trying to get their testimony are on 571. And I'm looking at my list, and I'm going to go ahead and ask for Zach Winston. If you are available, if you're, please unmute yourself and give us your name for testimony. And again, for everyone, at this point, we're working off a three-minute timer to accommodate all the individuals who like to testify on these three measures.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Chair Przydanski, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Zach Winston. I'm the Policy Director for the Oregon Justice Resource Center and formerly incarcerated. I'm here to speak in support of SB 571. The goal of the Oregon Justice Resource Center is to promote civil rights and improve legal representation for communities that have been underserved in the past, people living in poverty and people of color among them. We work in collaboration with like-minded organizations to maximize our reach to serve underrepresented populations, to train future public interest lawyers, and to educate our community on issues related to civil rights and civil liberties. Currently, Oregonians incarcerated for felony convictions are unable to vote. Once released from incarceration, they must reregister. SB 571 would allow incarcerated people to vote in the county of their last voluntary residence. The bill also provides that incarcerated individuals can register to vote and should receive election materials such as the voter's pamphlet and ballots in prison. To fully grasp the importance of SB 571, one must understand how we arrived at this moment. As with so many issues in the United States and Oregon, oppression fear has shaped the policy and framing around disenfranchisement of incarcerated people. A law written about 160 years ago during a time of forced labor, exclusion laws, lashings, lynching, and policies designed solely to benefit white men and oppressed people of color still forbids or incarcerated Oregonians from being valued as human beings in the state. Arguments in favor of felony disenfranchisement hinge upon the belief that people convicted of felony should lose their rights, a pervasive discourse that has been perpetuated by politicians across party lines. In reality, the detrimental impacts that this policy has on Black, Indigenous, and communities of color dates back to the racist Jim Crow era policies. As a result, people of color, specifically Black and Indigenous people, are overrepresented in prisons and are therefore disenfranchised at higher rates than white people. Restoring voting rights for incarcerated people is a necessary step towards dismantling racist policies and would acknowledge the complex root causes of crime, subverting the dominant discourse that people who commit crimes deserve to lose their right to vote. 95% of currently incarcerated individuals will be released back into the community. Preparation for a successful reentry to the community begins well before release, and participating in an important aspect of being a quote-unquote "good citizen" is a way to get ready for release and maintain community bonds. Oregon has the chance to take a historic step towards justice and equity in our state by becoming the third state in the nation to extend the right to vote to people currently incarcerated for felony convictions. There is an urgent need for progress in our democracy that integrates an evolving sense of decency into policies in order to move Oregon past archaic and prejudiced practices to recognize the inherent value of incarcerated Oregonians. There is tremendous power in feeling like part of the community has values and values its members. Oregon must embrace the opportunity to lead on this issue because in recognizing the humanity of our fellow human beings, we pay ourselves the highest tribute. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll be around for questions, Chair.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have a number of elected officials who have come in and come back out. I'm going to first start with DA Schmidt because of his time schedule. We will then come back. I believe we have at least one other representative who has been able to come in, and I'm hoping Representative Salinas has logged out and logged back in, so we can take hers after that. So DA Schmidt, if you'll give us your name and testimony, please.
Chair Przydanski, Vice Chair Thatcher, members of the Senate Judiciary. I speak today in support of 571 restoring voting rights. My name is Mike Schmidt, and I'm the District Attorney of Monoma County. As I considered my testimony last night, I came up with four general reasons why we send people to prison. Incapacitation, punishment, deterrence, and rehabilitation. We incapacitate people when, based on our laws and the judgment of prosecution, and sometimes the judge, we have decided that some people need to be temporarily or permanently removed from society in order to protect the safety of everyone else. We use prison, the ultimate restriction of freedom, in order to inflict some amount of suffering on a person ostensibly because they have inflicted pain on others. The mere fact that incarceration exists is supposed to make people think twice about committing a crime in the first place to deter them. And finally, when someone is sentenced, it is almost always with the expressed hope that when they re-enter society, their time in prison will have afforded them an opportunity to reflect on their behavior and to have worked on the underlying issues that led them down the wrong path to begin with. And that perhaps they may even engage in activities that will make it less likely they will ever commit a crime again. So then I considered which of these buckets does depriving an individual the right to vote fall into? Incapacitation? Allowing the act of voting does not put anyone in harm's way, so no. Punishment? I've never heard anyone in the thousands of sentencing hearings I've attended even comment on losing the right to vote when being sent to prison. If it was punishment, shouldn't it hurt? Deterrence? Research shows that the thing most likely to deter people from committing crimes is not even prison, much less losing the right to vote. What deters crime the most is the likelihood of getting caught. And finally, rehabilitation? There's nothing rehabilitative about getting cut off from society. In fact, it's harmful. Research consistently shows that ties to family and community are protective factors in terms of decreasing the likelihood of future criminal conduct. There's even research suggesting that specifically voting produces recidivism. So I submit to you that there is zero public safety justification for preventing someone from voting. So then what's the motivation? We've heard already today that there are racism and other motivations dating back hundreds of years for depriving some people the right to vote. To me, that's true, and I think it also says to the person who's incarcerated that you aren't one of us. Stripping someone of a right that others have fought and died for sends the message that you are less than. You aren't worthy. People make mistakes, sometimes horrible and even unforgivable mistakes. But what does it say about us as a society to dehumanize our fellow human beings? I want to live in a place that holds people accountable, protects public safety, and treats everybody with dignity and humanity, no matter what you've done in your life. That's a hopeful society. Restoring the right to vote to those who are incarcerated is at its core a gesture of hope. It gives people the right to dream, to participate, and to care. And as my friend Senator Jackie Winters used to say, it'll make people a good future neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, DA Schmidt. We're going to go next to Representative Pham, I believe is next on my list.
Thank you, Chair Przydanski, and members of the committee. I'm sorry, Chair Przydanski, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee. My name is Con Pham, and I'm the state representative for House District 46. I am proud today to testify in support of Senate Bill 571. This bill means a lot to me. As the first Vietnamese-American legislator in Oregon, I ran because I believe in our democratic processes. I believe our government's stronger when we have diverse representation from the communities we serve. I remember as a community organizer, holding ballot parties with our Asian and Pacific Islander members, taking them to Salem, introducing them to our political process. Islander members, taking them to Salem, introducing them to our political process. Most of them had never been to the Capitol before. And at the ballot parties, I saw them light up and get excited as they started to make the connections between the voter pamphlet statements they received in the mail and the legislators they were meeting with and the issues that directly impacted their lives. Voting is a fundamental right that recognizes that each individual deserves a voice in their community and in their government. As legislators, it's our role to enfranchise Oregonians, to expand opportunities for residents, to shape their communities, and to lower barriers for participation. We also need to take steps proactively to show the people of Oregon that we welcome and encourage the vote for those who want to vote. As political representatives, we are beholden to improve the lives of our fellow Oregonians. Oregonians do not cease being Oregonians when the state incarcerates them. They should retain their civic status throughout their sentences. And it's through these votes that Oregonians can continue to hold us, the representatives, accountable. About 15 years ago, I had the privilege of being part of a volunteer group in Oakland called the Asian Prisoner Support Committee. We would visit prisons and were matched with pen pals in prison. For me, getting to know these prisoners was enlightening and broke every stereotype I had about who was in prison. These men were thoughtful and tried to take accountability for their actions. They started clubs and were determined to learn and teach each other so they could leave and be active members of society. The ability to vote while incarcerated reminds people that they are still meaningful members of society, and it encourages them toward civic participation. Incarcerated folks are directly impacted by elections, from their meals to their medical care to the school districts that their children attend. The laws that we create and amend will continue to govern our constituents regardless of their status and location. Oregon should respect the voices of all Oregonians, including those who are incarcerated. I urge the members of the committee to support SB 571. It aligns with Oregon values and grants a voice to those who are among the most disenfranchised members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Representative Salinas, I'm hoping that you've been able to log out and log back in.
I don't see her chair, but I am reaching out to their office to see if she...
All right. We're going to go ahead and move forward at this point. And hopefully, if she can log back in and be unmuted, we'll take the testimony at that time. We're going to stay since we're on SB 571. I will continue working off the list that I have. And I will next go to Samantha Gudel. Samantha, if you'll be so kind to go next.
Sure thing. Thank you, Chair Prozansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the Committee on Judiciary. For the record, my name is Samantha Gladue and I'm the Executive Director of Next Up Action Fund, formerly known as The Bus Project. Our mission is to build political power with diverse young people to build a more just and equitable Oregon. And we have diligently worked to shape our election system for nearly two decades with a highlight reel of victories that includes paid postage for ballots, pre-registration for 16- and 17-year-olds, the nation's first-ever automatic voter registration law, online voter registration, and more. And our work has contributed toward Oregon being the number-one easiest state to vote in, with 90.2% of eligible Oregonians registered. We're constantly thinking about how we can improve our election systems and dismantle structural barriers so that those who are left out and left behind by our democracy can have their voices heard. Accordingly, we support Senate Bill 571. Restoration of voting rights is a concept that we've been working toward for three years. From working with Young Men at McLaren to working with a broad cross-movement coalition with advocates like Oregon Justice Resource Center and Apano, to having this hearing, we have learned that legislative action is necessary to rectify the unequal access to voting, which people impacted by our legal system have been afforded by lawmakers of the past. Senate Bill 571 is a comprehensive solution to overturn restrictions on civil rights that are rooted in racism at a time when, all across Oregon, people are uniting for racial justice and demanding change. The bill most explicitly impacts Oregonians in prison. It will also have ripple effects toward correcting persistent misinformation about whether or when someone who has been convicted of a felony can vote if they're out of prison, ending prison-based gerrymandering, and clarifying that state and local agencies must address the uneven access to the legal right to vote for Oregonians in county jails and for currently eligible Oregonians at correctional facilities. This is a big bill, but it's not scary. Some have asked whether we should reinforce the dynamic already at play and restore the civil right of voting to some Oregonians but not others based on what they're incarcerated for. To that, we say no. And the answer is rooted in the racist origins of our state, which this legislature has for the most part disavowed. We must never forget that our state's founders decided to ban Black people from living here rather than take a stand to affirm or deny slavery. And to continue to delineate who we restore rights to based on sentencing is a failure to recognize the unimpeachable rights that we all have as citizens. This kind of bargaining would once again be denying humanity, autonomy, and citizenship of incarcerated community members. And this is really about the mechanics of our democracy, not crime and punishment or biases that we develop from worst-case scenarios. A last important factor which I really want to mention about this bill is that it prevents bubbles of populations of voters from emerging at the site of a correctional facility by registering voters at their Oregon address prior to incarceration, rather than at the place where they're incarcerated.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. We're going to go next with, I believe it's Marshall Hirschfield?
Yes, hello, Chair Prozansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the Senate Committee on Judiciary. For the record, my name is Marshall Hirschfield, and I am the Political Director submitting this testimony on behalf of the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Apano. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Senate Bill 571. Our organization serves the Asian Pacific Islander community throughout Oregon. Apano unites Asians and Pacific Islanders to build power, develop leaders, and advance equity through organizing, advocacy, community development, and cultural work. The right to vote is only taken away from Oregonians while they are incarcerated. And due to disproportionate rates of imprisonment, Black, Latinx, Indigenous, Pacific Islanders, and young people are disenfranchised at higher rates. Ninety-five percent of Oregonians in prison return to their communities, and restoring their right to vote while incarcerated strengthens their civic engagement and recidivism rates are reduced. Collectively, we can advance equity and the overall health of democracy by restoring the fundamental right to vote while incarcerated on a felony charge. On behalf of Apano, we urge you to support Senate Bill 571. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next witness for today will be Jackie Witt. Jackie, if you're with us, based on the technical difficulties, if you're on the teams and you're not able to unmute yourself, it would probably be best to log out and log back in and we can come back and call your name. If you're calling in, if you hit star six, you should unmute. Let's go ahead and go with our next witness that I have listed is, I believe it's Tukoma Jackson? And it looks like from the screen, Ms. Jackie Witt may be back with us. Ami, is that correct?
It looks like it's correct, Chair.
That's correct. Can you guys hear me?
I can. Yes, we can. So if you'll be so kind to give us your name for the record and your testimony, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was mortified. I pushed the wrong button and disconnected myself. I had a panic attack. Okay. Hi, everybody. Vice, Chair Prozansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, members of the committee. I am so honored to be here with you today as a voice for the voiceless. I implore you to offer support to our community members in custody, and I urge you to reinstate their right to vote, and here is why. Many people end up in prison from a series of bad choices due to reasons beyond their understanding. Many unknowingly suffering from the effects of trauma, undiagnosed mental illness, domestic and sexual violence, which were often coupled with desperate life situations. Please see how this can easily become a powder keg of negative consequences. I am Jackie Witt, and this is my story. And due to the profound trauma and toxic stress I endured as a young adult and a child, I faced immeasurable hardship that continually seemed to plague my life. But the part I really need you to understand today, after all the therapy and life skills training, it wasn't until I had the opportunity to participate in civic responsibility that I really began to connect the dots. I always felt disconnected from community, like voting and speaking up would never make a difference in my life or for anyone around me. I had never experienced justice in my life, so I despise conventional politics and all that they stood for. Until the day I joined a union and seen democracy in action, it actually changed my life forever. And shortly after that, through civic leadership classes, I began to learn about policy and Senate bills. And even though, again, that was a lightbulb moment, I still did not know how to vote. When I finally learned this, it was a monumental moment for me. I knew at that point that I was an intricate part of the gears of society and that my voice and input mattered immensely. So that's why I'm here today, to look you all straight in the eyes and tell you that this issue matters, especially to those on the margin. I recently heard a saying that says, "He who suffers most has most to give." And many of our incarcerated populations have been victims of innumerable crimes that were unreported prior to entering prisons. In addition, many of these issues being voted on pertain directly to those who can't even have a say in what happens to them or their loved ones on the outside. This part of our community wants to participate in the shaping of our political landscape. Excluding people from the right to vote has historically been about silencing particular votes, especially those of the Black Indigenous people. That's why it's imperative that those voices and the voices of people in prison are heard and counted. Nathan Lazarin asks, "What's the meaning of life?" It's to make life meaningful. Since meaning can vary from day to day and hour to hour, it's up to us to consistently search for meaning in our lives. If we succeed at this, we activate the single greatest source of productive energy that humans, human beings possessed. What a gift you can give to add to the meaning of a person's life in helping them know that their input matters and that they matter. Let's reinstate their hope today, their voice, and reignite their purpose in life. Let's help these individuals feel connected and invested to the communities that they are returning back to. Last thing I want to mention, not only am I a state-certified mentor, devoted mother, awesome sister, helpful daughter, precious niece, rockin' auntie, excellent employee, dedicated public servant, a champion for the underserved, and a tireless advocate and activist for the justice-impacted community members. I'm also a registered voter and I'm formerly incarcerated. And all this was made possible when I began to feel counted and included. Please include our fellow community members who are in custody and reinstate their civil right to vote. Thank you all so much for your time, and it's great to see everybody.
Jackie, thank you very much for your testimony. Our next presenter will be Stevie Valles.
Hello, can you see me?
I can hear you. I don't see you yet. Yes.
Okay. Well, as long as you can hear me, I think we should be good.
There you go. We got your picture too. Thank you very much.
All right, right on. Thank you for having me today. My name is Stevie Valles. I'm an organizer with Chicago Votes here in Chicago, Illinois. In 2019, we helped write, pass, and implement a bill here in Chicago that turned the jail into a polling location, which made it the first jail of its kind to be a polling location. Prior to its passage, we coordinated vote-by-mail successfully, and I am sure Oregon is capable of doing the same. Oregon only has 13,000 people incarcerated compared to 40,000 here in Illinois. Allowing people to vote there would wedge open an important dialogue that will help states like Illinois and the entire country. The United States has 2.3 million people in prison. We disenfranchise more people through prison than any democracy in the world. Over 50% of the people in prison are Black, even though we, as Black people, only make up 13% of the population, making Black people still in 2021 the most disenfranchised population in America, which simply isn't fair. Democracy is better with more people. Taking a person's vote away when they are incarcerated assumes the justice system is always right, which it isn't. Coordinating elections only takes initiative. Not doing what is needed to give people a voice is a symptom of white supremacy and harmful to democracy. Giving people the vote is humane, it is moral, and it will put you as Oregon lawmakers on the right side of history. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And we will now go to see whether or not Tukoma Jackson has been able to join us. Apparently not. Let me just put on the record, Representative Salinas was unfortunately needing to go to another committee. She is scheduled to provide her testimony writtenly by email before the cutoff tomorrow morning. Let's go with Kristin Sartor.
Good morning, Chair Prozansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee. My name is Kristin Sartor, and I live in Multnomah County. Thank you so much for allowing me to express my immense support for Senate Bill 571, which would ensure that persons who are imprisoned have their voting rights restored. I want to mention that I was unaware of SJM2 and SJR10, but also want to express my full support for those incredibly important and necessary initiatives as well. As a mental health professional, I often reflect on the purpose of America's system of mass incarceration, which imprisons a higher rate of people than any other country in the world. We need to ask ourselves if the ultimate goal of putting people behind bars is to work towards rehabilitation or if it is simply a form of punishment and exclusion. If we would like to see our fellow humans return to their communities as productive members of society, we must focus on rehabilitation. This includes recognizing the humanity, citizenship, and dignity of each and every person, regardless of their circumstances or convictions. The right to vote, something many of us take for granted, can make a huge personal difference to someone who is incarcerated and cut off from society. It gives people an opportunity to continue to be invested in and engaged with their community. When we treat imprisonment simply as punishment, it is easy for people who are incarcerated to view the government as an enemy and to feel totally ostracized from society. It is senseless to take away the right to vote from someone because they have committed a crime. There are no safety concerns with incarcerated persons voting. When we strip away the right to vote from our citizens, we simply make it harder for them to feel connected to and invested in their communities. This makes reintegration into society much more difficult, and all of us are less safe as a result. Please support Senate Bill 571, SJM2, and SJR10, and restore voting rights and freedom to our citizens. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you for your time. I have Margie Easley next.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am Senator Prozansky and members of the committee. I am pleased to be here on behalf of the League of Women Voters. My name is Marge Easley. And this bill is very important because it addresses a core principle of the League of Women Voters of Oregon, the belief that voting is a fundamental citizen right that must be guaranteed. This principle was central to our mission at our founding 100 years ago and remains so to this day. I'm proud to say that the League has played a key role in gaining the right to vote for many former felons across the United States. And we would be very excited to see that Oregon would be the first state to restore voting rights to incarcerated individuals. Right now, Maine and Vermont do a Right now, Maine and Vermont do allow it, but they have always allowed it, so they have not restored that vote. So Oregon would be the first, and this hopefully would pave the way for other states to consider this step. I'd like to look at the 1996 amendment to the Oregon Constitution, which stated that laws for the punishment of crimes shall be founded on these principles: protection of society, personal responsibility, accountability for one's actions, and reformation. The League believes that the denial of the right to vote does nothing to further the goals of this amendment and that our laws should reflect 21st century thinking about criminal justice. We know that the civic engagement model of reentry, one that involves community through service and restorative justice, works far better than forcing inmates to undergo civil death. Several years ago, I taught a class in civic engagement to a group of women inmates at Coffee Creek Correctional Institution, and I can assure you that they were hungry for knowledge about how our government works and how they could have a voice in their futures. The right to vote would certainly have made them feel more connected to the outside world. In keeping with the League's redistricting position, we are happy to see that for the purposes of voter registration, this bill specifies a person's residence as the place where the person resided prior to incarceration. We, the League of Women Voters, pledge to help provide nonpartisan voter information, to help create informed voters. We feel that this is the best way to make reentry possible and have members, our inmates, feel more connected to their communities, and we strongly support SB 571. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next individual presenting is Donna Cohen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. I apologize.
I apologize for jumping in, but sometimes it's hard to track everything on the screen. So we have heard from all proponents, and I'm happy to hear this testimony. Is there not anybody signed up? It's good to hear both sides of the story, if it exists. I don't know. But I just wonder if there are anybody with oppositional or other concerns that we're not hearing.
There are two people that are listed. While I was doing is the, what I have been schooled, taken those for and then those against. We have one individual that has signed up, that is identified as against. They will be speaking after one other person. So let me go ahead and see whether or not Donna Cohen is with us.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
All right. If you'll please give us your name and testimony.
Yes, Chair Prozansky and Committee, my name is Donna Cohen, and I live in Multnomah County. And although I'm here to specifically around 571, I do want to say I support SJM2 and SJR10. I teach civics workshops to adults throughout Oregon virtually now, and primarily through libraries, but also through other groups such as the League of Women Voters, which I am a member, but I'm here, my personal testimony today. In my Elections and Campaign Finance Workshop, we talk about how there is no fundamental constitutional right to vote in the United States. If there was, we wouldn't have to be here now. We talk about how election laws vary so greatly in the 50 states, something we saw strikingly this past year. I reference a report called "The Cost of Voting 2020," which ranks states according to the difficulty of voting. Oregon ranks as least difficult, however, we can still improve. We talk about the disenfranchisement of those incarcerated and who have committed felonies, and I show a map of the states and of the wildly varying approaches. As you know, we had a guest from Maine today, which was wonderful, and Vermont are the two states in which a citizen never loses their right to vote. I support the fundamental right to vote. And if this isn't alone enough reason to support SB 571, then let's, again, keep in mind, as we have been reminded of today, the racial bias in our overall criminal justice system. Depriving a citizen of their freedom can be an appropriate price to pay for crimes. Depriving a citizen of the vote is not. Please move this bill out of committee with a due-past recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we will now hear, I've got a couple of people that we've called on that have not been here. I will be going to Jesse Gier, if you're with us, sir. Amea, she, this individual, Jesse Gier, is the only individual that I have listed as against, and I'm wondering if you can tell me whether or not they have logged in.
Chair, I don't see Jesse, and we did have one more person sign up as against, and one more person sign up as neutral, in addition to about nine other people that signed up this morning.
Okay, so at this point, I do not have those. I have the ones on the list. I was going to go through the neutral individual I have. Jesse, it sounds like you may not be with us. If you are, please, if you're calling in, it will be a star six to unmute. And if you are on the internet, it may be necessary for you to leave the meeting and come back in, as we've seen with other people having issues. So I'm going to work off the list that I do still have, and I'll go with the Jordan Schott.
Hey, Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Chair Prozansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to testify this morning. For the record, my name is Jordan Schott, and I'm a Willamette alum. I'm also a co-founder and the director of Legislative Strategy for Oregonians Against Slavery and Involuntary Servitude, or OASIS. We are a grassroots organization fighting to end modern-day slavery in Oregon. OASIS is doing this by working to change the language of the Oregon Constitution to formally ban slavery and involuntary servitude of incarcerated persons, first and foremost through SJR10. Through nonpartisan coalition building and the centering of incarcerated voices, OASIS believes in creating a future that is more just for all Oregonians. In the 2019 session, myself and a few other Willamette students stumbled upon the exception clause in Article 1, Section 34 of the Oregon Constitution, and we were determined to change it. With the devoted support of the late Senator Jackie Winters, we brought this same proposed amendment forward during the 2019 session. Unfortunately, that bill died in committee, but this only reinvigorated our drive for change. In the spring of 2020, I took a class at Willamette University, which brought students inside of Oregon State Penitentiary to attend class with a number of incarcerated individuals. It was in this class that I rededicated myself to ensuring that my classmates would never again be constitutionally considered slaves. Over this past summer amidst a global pandemic and a renewed fight for racial justice, myself and a number of other Willamette alum and incarcerated individuals came together to found OASIS. It is with this background that we proudly present SJR10, a bill that we care deeply about. SJR10, in conjunction with SJM2, would amplify the message that Oregon is committed to being actively anti-racist. We believe it is imperative that Oregon take proactive steps to ensure that slavery is truly a thing of the past. SJR10 is an incredibly simple bill. Fundamentally, all it does is remove the exception clause from Article 1, Section 34 of the Oregon Constitution. However, this proposed amendment has the potential to take a monumental step towards restoring the dignity and humanity that our incarcerated communities deserve. By changing this language, Oregon would do away with the antiquated racist legacy of slavery within our state's most important document. We are joined by a growing coalition of organizations across Oregon and the country in support of this movement, including the ACLU of Oregon, Urban League of Portland, Oregon Corrections Enterprises, Partnership for Safety and Justice, Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Planned Parenthood Advocates of Oregon, Oregon Justice Resource Center, and Abolish Slavery National Network. We are also joined by a growing number of states across the nation who are taking similar steps to remove their own slavery exception clauses. We do not want Oregon to be left behind. With that, I respectfully ask that the committee review the submitted written testimony. I know there's quite a bit of it. I also know that there are a number of other testifiers signed up who will be able to dive more deeply into the necessity of this bill and the widespread positive impact it will have on our communities, both incarcerated and non-incarcerated, if passed. I urge this committee to vote yes on SJR10 to bring Oregon one step closer to a more just and equitable world. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I have pretty well exhausted the list that had been given to me, and these are individuals who had signed up yesterday at 5:15. So we do have additional people from what Amea has told us that have signed up since then. So I'm going to ask her to call through, and I understand from the dialogue we just had, there may be an individual that has signed up against 571. And I will ask you to first call that individual before we continue to take testimony from others who are supporting 571. Amea?
Sure, Chair. Joshua Markey.
Oh, okay. Josh. Josh, if you were calling in by phone, you need to star six to unmute. If you're in on the internet this morning, for whatever reason, a number of individuals have had issues and had to go off and log out and log back in. We'll give you a second here to see if you...
Mr. Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please proceed.
I have submitted written testimony, which is considerably longer, but I'm aware that you have limits because of the large number of people. My name is Joshua Markey. I've been an attorney in Oregon since 1981. I've been a criminal lawyer most of that time, the vast majority of it as a prosecutor, the last 25, the last 27, as the district attorney in Astoria, but two years as a criminal defense lawyer in Eugene. I've listened very carefully to all the testimony today, and I would point out the historical context of the 13th Amendment. It was passed while the Civil War was still being fought, and it was done to remove involuntary servitude, except for a crime. It was designed to say to Black Americans who were being enslaved and oppressed, "No, your simple being is not the same thing as being duly convicted of a crime." There are so many aspects that have been raised by the many, many witnesses testifying today, such as if involuntary servitude is wrong, then we should be paying fair wages. I think you'd really have to have a serious conversation with firefighters, people who make jeans, all of the various other things that are involved. But essentially, let's be clear on what this is. There are only two states, I think they've been mentioned, Vermont and Maine, that allow anyone to vote, no matter how horrible their crime or where they are in their rehabilitative process. Oregon is one of the most progressive. Oregon allows people who have committed murder to write, I mean, to vote. They can have voted so long as they are no longer in a state institution. They can even be on probation for murder, and they can vote. They can even be, have been convicted of a sexual assault, be on parole, be in jail on parole, and still be allowed to vote because the restriction in Oregon only restricts people who are doing time in a state institution. So Oregon has gone a very long way down the road towards re-enfranchising people. That means a person, for example, to give some real-life examples, who was an attorney and defrauded their client of millions of dollars but whose sentence was limited to five months in jail, they never lost their enfranchisement. They can vote, as bizarre it sounds, they can run for office. Likewise, a person guilty of murder, and this is not a hypothetical, in the 1980s, who was given a quote "life sentence," served eight years, is out now. His enfranchisement is in no way impeded by the current law. Again, I know there's going to be a lot of invocation of the 13th Amendment and to claim that anyone who are overwhelmingly white, by the way, in prison are being, are essentially slaves, but that is simply not the case. The drafters of the 13th Amendment meant to outlaw slavery. They did not mean to outlaw imprisonment. Keep in mind, the vast majority of those convicted are not disenfranchised. The vast majority of people convicted of felonies don't even go to prison. So you're talking about a percentage so tiny and that lasts only for a period of time for which they actually are incarcerated in a state institution. There was a time in America when you suffered what was called civil death. That meant if you were convicted of a felony, you couldn't own a house, you couldn't purvey contracts, you might not even be able to get married. We are far, far from that, as we should be. A person can, you know, start businesses. I know people and have helped people start businesses who did 10 years for selling methamphetamines because that disqualification lasts that short period of time. What we are talking about, all of the witnesses have testified as to the great strides made by these people who were formerly, well, I'm sorry, who are currently incarcerated. And if you think about this for a moment, the kinds of decisions that we allow voters to make in this state, whether we should or should not have a death penalty, whether there should be mandatory sentencing, whether people imprisoned should be required to engage in useful work or education. These are all real bills. It's kind of the heights of ludicrousness, frankly, to say that the 12,000 people out of 4.2 million who have violated the social contract in the worst way possible should be right alongside those people who have crossed the southern border and become American citizens and are so proud on that day that they get sworn in and acquired their American citizenship. Thank you.
Josh, thank you very much for your testimony. Amea, would you please call our next individual for testimony?
Sure, Chair. Christine Kirk.
Good morning, Senator Prozansky and committee members. My name is Christine Kirk. I work for the Oregon Youth Authority. I'm here just to speak to you about how voting works currently in a youth corrections facility. Some people, including our elections offices at times, are confused about who can and cannot vote within a youth correctional facility. If you come to a secure facility as a juvenile, so you're adjudicated through the juvenile court, and you're 18 years old or older, you are eligible to vote while in a secure youth correctional facility because you are not incarcerated. If you come through the adult system and you are convicted, you are incarcerated. And so those youth that are over 18 in a youth correctional facility cannot vote. So over the last few years, we have worked to ensure that those who do have the right to vote in our facilities can register and do get their ballot. This is confusing, however. It is confusing to elections offices, who at times have believed that no one at our addresses was eligible to vote. And so we've worked with the Secretary of State's office, and we continue to do so to ensure that local elections offices understand, and that also that no youth who is incarcerated gets a ballot within a youth correctional facility, as they are not allowed to vote currently, and this bill would change. The confusion for us will not be in making it so that more people can vote. The confusion comes in having a differential population that looks identical in terms of their reformation and our goals in terms of engagement in the community, as well as setting the expectation that their voice does matter, and trying to educate in terms of civics, voter rights, access to voting, and successful reentry to the community. So this measure would increase mail and other sorts of things within our facilities, but we are welcome to that challenge. The challenge actually occurs for us when we cannot, when youth get mail that they shouldn't get, and how do we handle that? And so this would actually ease things for our staff and ensure that all are equal and that we can just process the ballots as we can currently for the youth that are adjudicated. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any, about how this would affect the youth correctional facilities across the state. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Amea, if you'll go through the next individual.
Anna Kemper.
Hi there.
Good morning.
Awesome. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, and thank you for having me today. I'm really excited to give my support today.
Anna, I need you to put your name on the record first, and please remember a three-minute limit. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yes, for the record, my name is Anna Kemper. I'm actually here as a member of Sunrise Movement PDX, where youth... I am actually here as a member of Sunrise Movement PDX, where a youth climate justice movement, and I'm here today in favor of, in support of Senate Bill 571 alongside so many important advocates that we've already heard today. So Sunrise Movement, we're working to build a world that is more sustainable, more just, and equitable for all people, and allowing incarcerated people to vote falls right in line with that. As we've already heard today, racial justice is climate justice. Black and brown humans are disproportionately incarcerated compared to white people, and as Senator Merkley and Senator Manning explained earlier, the 13th Amendment legalized slavery for those who were convicted of a crime. And as a result of this, America now sees rates of incarceration higher than any country. On top of that, black Americans are more than four times as likely to lose their voting rights than the rest of the voting age population. So regarding Senate Bill 571, it's truly appalling to me that incarcerated people can be counted as part of a census but not allowed to vote, especially since their populations mostly count towards rural white populations because of where prisons in our state are located. We should be looking to countries around the world as examples, like South Africa, Canada, Ireland, and Spain, as well as other states in this country that allow incarcerated people to vote. Taking away the rights of folks who are in prison unnecessarily strips them of their humanity and makes reintegrating back into free society that much more difficult. On top of that, as other folks have mentioned it, it strips us as a society of our humanity. So when we uplift our fellow humans, our world becomes more sustainable, healthier, and more livable for all people. Senate Bill 571, as well as the other legislation we've heard about today, SJM2 and SJR10, are exciting steps in the right direction. Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you. Ame, if you'll call the next person.
Sure. Danielle Mallard?
Hello?
Ms. Mallard, it sounds like we can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you as well.
But you're very, very weak. I'm wondering if you could turn your, if there's a way that you may turn your volume up.
Is it still really weak?
Yeah, very, very, yeah. So what I'm going to do, first of all, Ms. Eastly, I see that you have your screen open. I'm going to ask you to close your screen so we can get more bandwidth. And Danielle, why don't you go ahead and try again?
Is this better?
Much better. Thank you.
Great. Good morning, Chair Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Danielle Meyer, and I am an organizer with Sunrise PDX. I am here to testify in support of Senate Bill 571, but do first want to express my appreciation and strong support for the words shared by Senator Merkley, Senator Manning, Senator Frederick, and Senator Wagner regarding SJM2 and SJR10. In regards to Bill 571, I believe it is a crucial step in dismantling barriers to reintegration and dismantling inequitable power structures that exist within these institutions currently. As people have stated, 95% of people who are in prison right now will return to their communities, and so reentry is already a difficult endeavor because of the systems in place meant to marginalize formerly imprisoned individuals. However, having strong ties to community allows people to reintegrate into society with that sense of agency and purpose, and civic engagement is one way to do this. It reduces recidivism and creates people power within these communities. Right now, the lives of people in prison are dictated by policies made by elected officials, and unless these individuals are given the right to vote and participate in the democratic process, they're not able to hold officials accountable in this inequitable power dynamics. With 75% of women in Oregon prisons being mothers and 100% of people in prison having families or friends that care about them and their future, this bill and what it could mean is deeply personal for folks, and we've heard it today. I've been so moved by some of the testimony that's been shared. It's a step towards liberation for people who've been unjustly treated by these systems at play. And to be clear, this type of legislation is just really the first step in addressing this entire destructive legacy that the prison system uplifts. But for now, and for the purpose of altering the systemic practices of disenfranchisement in play, the restoration of voting rights for those in prison is a place to start, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Ame, who's next?
Andrea Valderrama?
Chair Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and members of the committee. My name is Andrea Valderrama, and I'm here representing the ACLU of Oregon. We're a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization dedicated to the preservation and enhancement of civil liberties and civil rights with more than 28,415 members statewide. We're here today in support of SB 571 in coalition with the many other advocates and elected officials here this morning. The ACLU has defended the voting rights of black, indigenous, people of color for most of our history and continues to do so even today. We challenged the poll tax designed to prevent black Americans from voting decades before a constitutional amendment abolished the practice in 1964, and we have been the primary enforcer of the Voting Rights Act. We believe that the removal of the voting rights, the removal of voting rights is an affront to civil liberties and should not be connected to punishment. We support SB 571 because voting is a cornerstone of our democracy, and everyone, especially BIPOC community members, should have the opportunity to vote for elected representatives making decisions about their families and futures. Civic engagement, specifically voting, increases the ability for reintegration, reducing recidivism, and making communities safer. And implementation of this bill is highly feasible. The ACLU of Oregon is currently litigating, excuse me, the ACLU national continues to litigate voter suppression and minority vote dilution cases in over a dozen states from coast to coast in every region in the country. We're the only civil rights organization committed to defending voting rights of all Americans, and we will continue to do so here in Oregon. For these reasons, the ACLU of Oregon urges you to support SB 571, and I would also just like to lift up that we are also in support of SJR10, the amendment to the Oregon Constitution to prohibit slavery. Thank you.
Thank you. Ame, who's next?
Mason Drummond?
Do you see any indication that they're actually on?
I don't. I've got a few people on the list, Chair, that I can't tell if they're on or not. Do you want me to just go ahead and call out their names?
Yes, let's go ahead and call out who's next, and we'll figure that if we can get those done so we can get back to the other ones.
Iris Maria Chavez? Morgan Godwin?
Emily Hunt? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Emily.
Hi, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Emily Hunt. I was born and raised in Clackamas County, and I'm currently a senior at the University of Oregon. Senate Bill 571 is an important step toward justice for Oregon, not just for Oregonians incarcerated by the state, but for all of us. I have been honored to take courses inside the Oregon State Penitentiary through the UVO's Inside Out program, which gave me a completely different perspective on incarcerated Oregonians. They are people with as much capacity to analyze and evaluate candidates and issues as you or I possess, and they deserve the right to have a voice in our democracy. I also had the opportunity last year to intern with the nonprofit organization Beyond These Walls, which connects and supports with LGBTQ+ prisoners across Oregon. This experience deepened my awareness of both the needs and capabilities of incarcerated Oregonians. LGBTQ and black, indigenous, and people of color are overrepresented in our prisons, and their disenfranchisement is a compounded injustice. During the pandemic, we've seen just how much public policy directly impacts Oregonians in prison. An elected official should be held accountable to represent the interests of all Oregonians. People in prison should be able to hold elected officials accountable in the same way that all other Oregon citizens do, through the vote. I urge you to pass Senate Bill 571, and thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Ame, who's next?
The last person that I have listed is Danielle Mallard.
I think we did her, Mr. Chair.
That's what I thought, too. I think she may have popped up on the registration a few times, but I figured I'd call just in case I was wrong.
Yeah, I'm looking, and she must have been on another list because I don't have, I saw Danielle, and I know we did take it, so that was one that she must have called out earlier. So at this point, it appears that we've reached everyone that has signed up for SB 571. Because of the technical difficulties, though, I am going to ask if there's someone that's with us that was previously signed up, that's on, that your name may have been called and you weren't able to make contact. If you are with us now, that would be great. All right. For those who are listening, as well as those who are tempted to, that were on our list but for whatever reason were not able to get through or had other change in plans, the record for Senate Bill 571 is open and will stay open until tomorrow morning as regularly scheduled till 8:00 a.m. And so if you have testimony you'd like to submit, please do so using the OLIS system electronically, and we will have that as part of the record so long as it's received by 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. With that, I'm going to now move in, back into our, I'll go ahead and recess, excuse me, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on Senate Bill 571, and we're going to come out of recess on SJM2 as well as SJR10. And we were going to start with, I believe we'll start with, I'm looking at who's here. We had, I'm going to ask again, Jesse Greer has signed up not only for 571 but also was in opposition to the SJM2 and SJR10. Jesse, I want to see if you have in fact been able to get back with us. And not seeing them at this point, I think we'll go ahead, I'm looking at the names that have, individuals that have already given testimony earlier, and I am going to go down to names that I have not called. I've got Jordan Connor.
Yes, Chair.
All right. If you'll please go and give us your name and your testimony.
My name is Jordan Connor. Well, Chair Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, members of the committee, I am Jordan Connor, a volunteer with Oasis Prison Coalition. The 13th Amendment states that neither slavery nor involuntary servitude shall exist in Oregon except as a punishment for crime where the party should have been duly convicted. My name is Jordan Connor, and I am talking about this today because as a person of color, I see and hear about slavery slash involuntary servitude around me. I see it happening in books, movies, school, and inside of my family. I am closer to involuntary servitude because, and slavery, because my stepdad is incarcerated and legally a slave. I'm 11 years old, and I know it should be illegal to be a slave and put to do involuntary servitude inside of prisons and the criminal justice system. I want to grow up in a world that does not include slavery nor involuntary servitude because it can improve the way people think and the way people feel inside and outside of the criminal justice system. I think our future should be free and not have slavery slash involuntary servitude because it is wrong to make people do work that is not right for them to do so, and also to be used for things that they don't volunteer freely for. People should not be considered as property to someone and considered any less than human. People like Anthony should not be classified as a slave and used for involuntary work because they are nothing less than human. They have families. Anthony and I talk about school and the work we do, like how he leads a Hoozasah Club and how I work with Oasis Prison Coalition. It is important because he is not material. He is a human, and he matters to our family. We need to do better and stop slavery slash involuntary servitude and stop treating humans as property.
All right. Thank you. And at this point, we have a number of people who gave testimony on 571 that also made comment as to support for these two measures. So what I'm trying to do is get individuals who have not given testimony in any sense, and I'm going to ask if Melissa Michaud is with us.
I am.
Would you please give your name for the record and your testimony?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Przyansky, Vice Chair Thatcher, and all the members of the Judiciary Committee. I am Melissa Buse Michaud, and I live in Marion County. I'm a professor of politics, policy, law, and ethics at Willamette University and Director of the Transformative Justice Initiative. As a nation, we are long overdue in coming to terms with our history, our legacy of slavery, and ensuring the political, social, and economic rights of all our people. The state of Oregon also needs to come to terms with its history of racial exclusion and racial inequality. Although the territory of Oregon banned slavery, it also expelled black Oregonians. Those who stayed in Oregon were subject to flogging. The flogging punishment was eventually changed to labor. When Oregon entered the Union in 1859 on the eve of the Civil War, it forbade black people from moving and settling within the state borders. Further, it allowed slavery for those convicted of a crime. While the Black Exclusion Law was repealed in 1926, the slavery exception still stands. Two important points here. Number one, the slavery exception meant that our prisons could become a substitute form of racial control. Throughout the early 20th century, racial control was achieved through extralegal means, especially the rise of the Ku Klux Klan in Oregon in the 1920s and 30s. It's not an accident that mass incarceration begins after the Civil Rights Movement threatened to make real the long-promised citizenship and economic rights for African Americans. Today, African Americans and other men of color are disproportionately policed, prosecuted, and convicted of long sentences. The social science literature on this is clear. So ending the slavery exception is a matter of racial justice. And my second important point is that as a people, we no longer believe that slavery is an acceptable punishment for a crime. The practice of slavery was and is dehumanizing, immoral, and should be illegal under any and all circumstances. I'll be real fast. Sometimes, when confronted by the long history of racial injustice in the United States, white people throw up their hands and say, "Well, what can I do about history?" And I have an answer to that. We can all acknowledge this terrible history and the many ways we live with its legacy. We can abolish the slavery exception in the Oregon Constitution once and for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Had to unmute myself there. Ame, who else do we have? We have, I'm going to take one more individual, then we're going to need to announce a carryover for the rest of the individuals that set up to wanting to testify.
Sure, Chair. Takuma Jackson?
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, we can. If you'll give us your name before your testimony, sir.
Yes, my name is Takuma Jackson, and I'm here in support of SJR10 as an active member of Oasis and an executive body, active member of Yoozasah Culture Club at the Oregon State Penitentiary. I'm sorry, you guys ready? I apologize.
Yes, yes, we're ready.
Yes.
If you'll proceed.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, my name is Takuma Jackson again, and I'm an active member of Oasis in full support of SJR10. I've actually been an active in support of SJR10 while incarcerated at the Oregon State Penitentiary as an executive body for Yoozasah Culture Club. I was actually just recently granted clemency after 20 years of a 34-year sentence and feel privileged to be able to be here live in representation of SJR10 from a position of African American. Actually, being part of an organization called Yoozasah located within the prison walls of Oregon State Penitentiary, I have continuously worked on educating black incarcerated men and others on the importance of our existence and the enrichment of our culture. But when you are incarcerated black men or women and read the language of slavery deeply rooted within legislative script, we are forever reminded of a systemic racism and the psychological and emotional toll that it continues to take on us even to this day. Now, I'm not opposed to work, but as long as we're getting equal pay and it's voluntary, and I'm not opposed to paying my debt to society, but as a black man, I am deeply opposed- But as a Black man, I am deeply opposed to the language of slavery being impressed upon me on paper. You know, as it, it is a continuous reminder that, you know, we have not overcome. It almost feels like one cruel joke that continues to grip and plague the Black community. I guess, out of prison, it may seem, you know, that it's insignificant. It written into the Constitution and its intended meaning, but the language of slavery itself will always be a language of degradation and echo connotations of superiority and inferiority. So removing this language, it, to me, and I guess to my Black community, it actually starts a healing process deeply rooted in my Black culture and long overdue. So in conclusion, I just, I ask that, you know, you please vote yes on SJR 10. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. At this point, we're going to have to conclude our testimony for today. What I understand, Ame, I need to work with you here. My understanding, we have, you have six individuals that are still scheduled to give testimony?
That's correct, Chair.
All right, and so, yeah, I want that on the record. And so basically, we will have those individuals. I'm also going to ask you to reach out to Mr. Jesse Greer, since he did sign up for the three different measures we had today in opposition, and inform him that if he is still wanting to give testimony on to the new date. So I'm not sure if staff at this point has a date that we can have a date certain. If not, what I will do is I will carry these over tomorrow for the specific purpose of getting a different date set. I don't think, based on our calendar for tomorrow, with the number of public hearings that are already set, that we would be able to take that testimony at that time. So, and I know I've been working with other counsel as to next week's schedule, as to filling in some of the carryover that we had to do previously on the first, meaning Monday, the first, and I believe some stuff maybe on the second. So do we have a date at this point that we would want to announce for date certain? Or if not, let's not rush it. I can just carry them over till tomorrow, and then we can actually then have a date certain to move them to, with the understanding that we will not be having testimony continuing tomorrow.
I have some suggestions, Chair, but I would like to run it by you first to make sure that it works with the calendar.
All right, so then I think what we should do at this point is I am going to carry over the testimony of those who have signed up already that are on our list for SJM 2 and SJR 10. We will also allow for those who have signed up on those matters. So I will carry over, I'm going to say, SB 571 for the purpose of taking that invited testimony as well. So in essence, we will be carrying over all three measures until tomorrow. Again, colleagues, this, and for everyone that's listening, this is for the purpose of procedural, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. We will not be able to take testimony, at least I don't believe we will tomorrow because of the number of other public hearings we have scheduled. And what we will do is determine a date certain for those measures to be brought back to take up the remaining of the testimony. So with that, I'm going to ask, Ame, is there anything else that we need to cover except for closing with the understanding that we're back tomorrow at 8:00?
No, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. So colleagues, we will be concluding our hearings for today. What we will be doing is meeting tomorrow, tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., same place, same time. And I hope all of you have a wonderful day today. And with that, we have in fact crossed the Ts, dotted the Is, carried over those three measures till tomorrow for the purpose of identifying the date that they'll be back. And we are adjourned until tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. With that, we're concluded. Goodbye, everyone.